Ready, roll call please.
Gary Cunningham.
Here.
Nathan Long.
Here.
Doug Bryson. Deanna Hinton.
Here.
Steve Griffiths.
Here.
Riley Hoagland.
Here.
And Bruce Robinson is absent and excused.
Thank you. Agenda changes or revisions?
We have none.
Moving on to minutes, a request for approval for March 1st, 2016.
Move to approve the minutes, March 1st, 2016.
I second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If I may, I would like to just make a note of today's date, March 15th, of the minutes that we just passed of March 1st and on page... Excuse me. On page five of the minutes, where it shows that we voted regarding the no-appeal fee, will be charged for a decision on an administrative adjustment. I voted no, but I wanted to explain my no vote, which was that I do agree with the no-fee charge, but I would have liked to have had that just for the notice area only.
Thank you. Can I have a... Let's draw the motions to change it.
Move to withdraw the motion to approve the minutes and to reapprove them with the new change.
Second?
I'll second, Dan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just for clarity, that's just a note with today's date on it indicating why the vote was what it was.
All those opposed?
Thank you. Thank you.
Alrighty. Public comments on non-agenda items or matters not involving a public hearing. Please limit comments to three minutes per speaker. Speakers should keep in mind they are being broadcast on live TV. Anybody like to speak? Seeing none. Final orders and resolutions. The group communications. We have final recommendations for 2016-01 miscellaneous zoning code amendment. The public hearing record was closed on March 1st. Tentative recommendations made on March 1st. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the final order for resolution in written communications for 2016-01 miscellaneous zoning code amendments.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next to final recommendation for 2016-02 retail marijuana stores. This includes both recreational and the medical stores. As the public hearing record was closed on March 1st, tentative recommendations was also on March 1st. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve. 2016-02 retail marijuana stores.
Good motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Good motion as second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Alright. It is time for our public hearings and deliberations on ZOA 2016-03, which was multi-family residential developments. We had a public hearing open on March 1st and the record was held open and the public hearing was held open and continued tonight's meeting. So I hear there's... Staff has an update.
Yes, well, I can tell you that since we opened the public hearing, we have... Richard and I have talked to two of our developers in town, Joe Barnes and John Oxenholt, and we had interesting discussions about what they liked or didn't like about the ordinance or what they could live with more accurately. And we also... Kate and I went to a meeting of the Lincoln City Citizens Action Committee, and there were a couple people there we talked with on a Sunday evening about multifamily ordinance proposals. And after that, the organizer of that group put up a Survey Monkey and got 27 responses. So I have not summarized everything yet, but I intend to do that and get back to you at your next meeting. We also... Richard and I also talked to Lawrence Kumar, who's been working with us on the Nell Scott Gap project and has done a lot of work in town, not necessarily with the multifamily, but we asked him about some of the design specifications, and he had some interesting ideas about that. And he also drafted up a revised version of a multifamily building that we recently approved, so I can share that with you next time also. I would like you to take testimony if anyone here wants to give testimony tonight and otherwise continue the public hearing until April 4th.
Ready for...
5th.
5th. Is there anybody that would like to comment on the multifamily residential development? Seeing none, so I'll be looking for maybe a motion to...
Kate or Deborah?
Yes.
On the conversation, are you going to give us a concise breakdown on what Lawrence said to you to...
Yes, yes, I will.
Any other discussion? Do I hear a motion?
A motion that we continue this till the next meeting of the planning commission on...
April 5th at 6:00 PM at this location.
At this location. Keeping the public record on the...
Open. Keeping the public record open.
In the public hearing?
Public hearing, open.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ready. On to transportation plan and amendments, which is ZOA 2016-04. That is now 6:09 PM. Public hearing for file ZOA 2016-04 is now open. The public hearing concerns the city initiative proposal to amend the Lincoln City Municipal Code in Title 12, which is streets, sidewalks, and public access. Title 16 subdivisions, Title 17, which is zoning, and Lincoln City Comprehensive Plan, all the amendments are proposed to implement the 2015 Transportation System Plan. The planning commission's role in the legislative process is to consider any written or oral comments or testimony, as well as information from staff and present a recommendation to the city council, who will hold an additional public hearing. The city council may adopt the planning commission's recommendations, may adopt a different recommendation, or may take other actions. The commission must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the commission wish to declare a conflict of interest in this matter? Seeing none. The substantive criteria that apply to this hearing include the statewide planning goals, the city's comprehensive plan, and the applicable provisions of the city's zoning ordinance. Comments and testimony should be directed to these criteria or to the other criteria that you believe apply to the subject of this hearing. Before the staff presents a report, I would like to summarize the public hearing procedures, which have been adopted by the city council. A brochure outlining these procedures is at the entrance to the city council chambers. The staff will present a report and respond to any planning commissioner's questions. After that, any person may speak for up to three minutes in the planning... Let's see, where am I at? Three minutes, and if the planning commission has any questions, your time responding to any question will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name only. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. Will staff please present your report?
Thank you. I hope that what I present this evening is very familiar to you because just a few months ago, the city council adopted the 2015 Transportation System Plan after a public hearing and recommendation from the planning commission. As you know, we had many people involved in developing this plan over the past three years. We had, in addition to the council and the commission, we had a project advisory committee, and we had many people from the general public comment throughout the process. I just listed here the consultants, DKS and associates. We also had involvement from ODOT Regional Planner, Terry Cole, who stuck with us through the whole process, and then staff from the planning department and the public works department. The proposal, the amendments and the ordinance are... Have two basic sections. One is addressing the comprehensive plan amendments. And essentially, that is taking the goals, vision statement, objectives from the 2015 Transportation System Plan and replacing what's in the comprehensive plan with those that we just adopted. So those are all spelled out in the ordinance. I'm not going to go through them. And if you have any that you would like to call out, that you have concerns about, let me know, otherwise I'm just going to proceed. Yes.
Please.
Okay. Okay, and chapter 1756, which is the street parking?
Oh, I haven't gotten to the zoning part yet.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Alright. Then, alright, so we're good with the transportation system goals, objectives, and vision statement. Okay, then we move on to the zoning ordinance, and the rest of the ordinance deals with amendments proposed for the zoning... For the, I should say, for the city code. The first part is Title 12. That's not the zoning ordinance. It's streets, sidewalks, and public spaces. And we have a couple here. One is unobstructed sidewalks. It clarifies that you have to have at least five-foot clear dimension for sidewalks. And then in chapter 1228, there is a section now that we currently have that applies only to the Nell Scott... Basically, the Nell Scott Gap. And ODOT asked the city to put that in there a number of years ago. And now we are actually proposing to expand that citywide. And I can tell you a little bit more about it if you'd like to know. It's basically talking about access and how close you can have an access to the highway. So, for instance, a driveway should be as far as possible from the highway so to give people a chance to get on and off before they have to stop for a vehicle turning into a driveway. We basically noticed, at least what I noticed about this, the only difference in my mind is that we are asked to provide ODOT with more notice when someone proposes a driveway within, I believe, 200 feet. So... Commissioner Cunningham, are you troubled by that?
I guess what I'm asking, what I'm thinking is pre-existing as they stand now driveways that might be within that 200-foot barrier are... They're grandfathered, obviously.
We're only talking about new accesses.
Basically, we have to notify ODOT whenever we're going to allow a driveway within that 200 feet.
Of the highway, right.
Okay.
I can look that up.
I think I'm reading it right now.
Okay.
How much time... I mean, I'm wondering if this is impacting somebody's ability to put a house on a property for some timeframe while we're notifying ODOT that we're going to allow somebody to build a property?
We... When we do site plan review, we always have a certain amount of time. First, we get an application, then we review the application for completeness, then we send out notice that we have received a complete application to the neighbors, and so at that time, we would also be notifying ODOT. We... Actually, for a site plan review, typically Kate always notifies ODOT anyway, so it's not...
But that's on commercial properties. Is that also on residential properties? Or does this apply to residential properties also?
Well, let's see. Let's read it together here. Five and six. It applies to lots created, consolidated, or modified through a land division partition, lot line adjustment, lot consolidation, or street vacation, and to properties subject to land use approval or site plan review. Well, any of those divisions could apply both to residential or commercial property. The land use approval for site plan review typically is for multifamily or commercial. The requirements in this chapter are in addition to requirements relating to properties abutting 101 imposed by ODOT.
So I guess what I'm reading is if it's a residential property as existed before and it's not having those lines redrawn, then you still wouldn't have to do that?
No.
Because you wouldn't have crossed the barrier?
Right. Okay. Then, in Title 16, which is our subdivisions chapter title, we have chapter 1612 Design Standards, and it talks about the block length and distance between intersections. We had something in there. We decided to change it with the update of our new TSP. And one thing that we didn't do is put it in the ordinance itself. We just referred back to this section or to the Transportation System Plan. I'm suggesting that we actually put the chart in the ordinance, just to make sure that it stands the test of law and is easy to access. Okay, and then in 1612-200 easements, it adds... It was for pedestrians. It also says... Now it says pedestrians and bicycles, and it tells you what the requirements are for providing easements. It makes it a requirement rather than suggests that if the planning commission requires it, it would be a requirement, but it just now is a requirement. So this odd little picture here is the copy machines version of what Richard drew to explain this. The language in there that was pretty confusing about connecting a cul-de-sac to the same street. And what we decided it meant was if you had a very curvy cul-de-sac, you might have... We might have required a connection between the bulb of the cul-de-sac and the street as it wraps around. We don't anticipate that happening very often. We have a limit of 600 feet on a cul-de-sac and also a limit of 18 single-family homes. And so we just think it's confusing, and I suggest we leave it out. Yes.
Just a question. The subdivision, does that include PUDs? That term?
Yes, yes. We have... Actually, we have PUD standards in our zoning ordinance, and it's quite a number of pages about planned unit developments. But for the actual development standards, it goes back to subdivisions. We have proposed new minimum right-of-way and roadway widths in the Transportation System Plan, and so we are suggesting that we add those to Title 16 subdivisions. In Title 16 subdivisions, we have two statements, basically in 161620 and 161660, that make it clear that it's the developer's responsibility to improve streets and alleys to city standards and also to construct sidewalks and accessways to city standards. I probably should have mentioned this at the beginning, but when you do a long-range plan like the Transportation System Plan and you decide what it is you want, that's a great step. But to actually implement it, you have to change your rules, your regulations, to make sure that when people come in, that you're asking them to do the updated version. And also, you know, you can implement the plan through getting budgeting funds or getting grants or something like that to pay for improvements. But this is one that we can do right now. We don't have to have money to do it, and it just implements what we've already said we want. So, okay, and so here's an example in the Transportation System Plan of one of those street widths and roadway widths that it specifies. And it breaks down... It has more roadway types than we used to have. Now, we finally get to zoning, and in zoning, in chapter 1752, which is our supplementary regulations and exceptions, we specify in 1752-240 that if the city engineer deems it necessary, applicants need to provide a traffic impact study. And you have seen those traffic impact studies. Most recently, I recall one for Logan Park proposal. And so you probably remember that it's important to specify exactly why they're doing this study and what you want it to include. And so those requirements are in 1752-300. In 1756, this is off-street parking and loading, and is this the one you had a question about? Okay. I'll just say the 5650, it trades car parking for bicycle parking up to 10% of the car parking. So if you... And it gives the numbers that you need to provide, and it's a trade-off. 1756-80 trades parking for cars for transit uses. So if you need to have a turnaround or you need to have a transit shelter, then you could trade one of your parking lots or spaces for that transit amenity. And 1756-130 specifies that bicycle parking is required and specifications for that parking, not for single-family or duplex use, obviously, but for multifamily and commercial.
Now, yes. I'm just having just a little bit of difficulty with 1756-50, only in that... Well, I'm not quite sure what 10%. I suppose if you had 300, then that'd be 30. I just want to know who all these people are that are going to be riding bicycles because right now, there are some people who ride bicycles, but we have a lot of traffic and people parking that are tourists or visitors, and they come by cars. So I just... I guess I just want to make a comment that I don't want us to get rid of all our parking or even a chunk of it for cars.
Would you like to limit that? You have a limit here. More than we have limited it?
Well, I'm not sure. I just... I guess I just would like some assurance that there are going to be all these bicycles that we're making provisions for in the transportation plan and also, you know, even other things that we've talked about.
Move to 5%? Lower it?
Yeah, maybe. Yeah, I just... I'm just having a hard time with that because I can't see this being a bicycle-traffic city unless there are a lot of changes and adding a place to park your bicycle might not be... I know a lot of things that are in the transportation plan help bicycle traffic be safe and actually provide for that, which I think is great, but I'm just... And I don't have a number. I really don't have a number. I just have my comment of just worrying about car spaces.
After we send our recommendations to Council or whatnot, and it's passed through there, this can also be tweaked later. Come back and we tweak later, can it?
Yes, it can. If we find that we're getting too many bike parking spaces and we're having a problem with our vehicle parking spaces, we certainly can do it that anytime. This came out of... And, you know, maybe when I take it to city council, this might be something we can try to play around with and use some examples. And that way, at the city council, if they agree that maybe it's too much, you know, they can cut it back. But I can try to provide some examples and see how that would actually play out.
How many bicycle parking spaces can fit in a car parking space?
I suspect that it's two.
By the requirement of...
It depends. Yeah. It says two, you know, they trade two for one. It depends probably on the type of bike rack that's provided.
Right, it's covered shelter or not.
Uh huh. And I think one thing that would be nice, for instance, in multifamily, we did say something about parking for multifamily, and I want to make sure that that's the same as this, too. That it's... Even if you don't ride your bicycle every day to work, if you have a place to keep a bicycle, that means you'll probably ride it sometimes, which will reduce some traffic, car traffic. But I agree. I... Our consultants for the walking and biking plan that we did in 2012 were from Portland, and so, you know, it's worth taking a look at to make sure that it's realistic for our community.
For me, more than taking too many parking spaces away from vehicles would be the bicyclist's comfort level of leaving their bike out there for an extended period of time. You know, that's... So, yeah, you have a bike rack, but, you know, it's going to get stolen.
It doesn't seem secure.
Right, so... And I don't know how you would write how secure the thing is, you know?
So you're suggesting maybe we should have some standards? And actually, later in the ordinance, there is a section that talks about security. In the next section, 1756-130, bicycle parking... Bicycle parking facility shall be either a lockable enclosure for storing bicycles or stationary object, a rack, to which bicyclists can lock their bicycles. Structures that require a user-supplied lock shall accommodate both cables and U-shaped locks and shall permit securing of the frame and both wheels, but not necessarily without removal of the front wheel. So that was written, obviously, by somebody who bikes a lot.
Good idea.
Yes.
Nice.
Yeah. Add one more, please. And in section 1756-110, and that's the Development and Maintenance Standards for Off-Street Parking Areas, adds a new paragraph M, which requires preferential carpool-vanpool parking in lots with more than 20 parking spaces. And that's just kind of in the same vein, I guess. I would... If there's any way to do as needed, I'm trying to think of where people would live in a, you know, in a situation where they would all be going to work at the same time at the same place. Maybe the hospital? I don't know. Maybe to the casino? Maybe more likely. But I can't think of enough instances where we would, again, limit the car parking for van parking unless it's as needed, and then that would be great. I mean, I like the idea, but I just don't know how it would be used.
And I'm not sure how often it would be used because we don't have that many employers who probably have more than 20 employees. So the ones that you mentioned, schools would be another, I'm sure.
If there's a way to include something like some of the senior living areas that provides a lot to the hospital, maybe a special place for a wheelchair van to come to and park. to and park close, you know, it's never blocked close enough to get the seniors to the van easily. Something like that in there.
Just because we don't have something that would need it, I mean, if something we wouldn't need it would come, and then we would go, oh, here we go.
Change it, I just don't see the...
It's current use?
Yeah, exactly.
It could be for the future.
I know, but that's a whole space again. And I'm just trying to avoid the removal of parking spaces where people would naturally park next to where they live or wherever, and then...
It's where they work, yeah.
Yeah, where they work.
Employee parking.
Right, where they work, and then have it spill out onto the adjacent streets. But I don't know. Suppose you have to have at least 20 employees in order for this to kick in, I suppose, or spaces, it says. But if you're, but does that include, would that include a business that has spaces for people to come and shop, and they have 20 spaces?
Well, it says parking lots for uses with designated employee parking and with more than 20 parking spaces. So, you know, that's pretty limiting.
There you go.
I'm not even sure who that applies to.
You know what I mean? Like, it's a separate parking lot, ideally.
Uh huh, or signs that say, yeah.
You can't park here. How many places in town have that?
So, you know, maybe it is something, I mean, it's up to you to decide if you'd like to recommend omitting this, but...
Trying to wait, I see it right now. But I do understand your concern though, eliminating parking spots, because I know a lot of places went up fairly fast. If you eliminate one, that's huge.
Yeah, but if you have a business with a bunch of employees and you go get them, wouldn't you want your employees to, you know?
No, I understand. I'm just under a thought process of eliminating parking spots, too. I mean, just trying to keep it in mind.
Okay. And then, let's see, bicycle parking requirements and specifications. And then we have two more provisions. Oh, that's just, I just threw that in there for illustration. Oh, yes. Okay, and the last two just have to do with public notice again. The first one is about notice to ODOT, and it's basically the same thing as Title 1228-200. And the next one says that the action by City Council will be consistent with the Oregon Transportation Planning Rule, and we really don't have any choice about that. So that's what I have for you this evening.
Thank you.
Yes.
Then, any other commissioners have any questions, staff? Thank you very much.
Oh, and I do want to mention that these are only half of the amendments that we want to make, and so we'll be coming back with more.
If anybody wants to see more of what's going on, they can go online, go to the website.
Or...
The whole transportation plan.
Oh, the whole transportation plan, right, is at LincolnCityTSP, all one word, dot org.
I just want to say that this represents an awful lot of work over a long period of time, and it's really appreciated. It's very nicely done.
I appreciate all the time the community's put into this, and I hope it serves us well.
Thank you. Now is the time for public comment and testimony. Please state your name only. Is there anybody who'd like to speak? Seeing none. Is there any person in the audience who did not sign up but wishes to speak? Please raise your hand. Seeing none. Is there any comment from representatives of public agencies? Seeing none. If there is no further comment, is there a motion to close the public hearing and the record?
I motion to close the public hearing and the record on the Transportation System Plan Amendments, ZOA 2016-04.
Bring your motion.
Second.
Give a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. That is time to talk about it a little bit, if you'd like. Anybody have any comments? Any discussions? Dylan Gray?
Dylan Gray.
Is there a motion to recommend to the City Council?
I recommend we, I motion, we recommend to the City Council the acceptance of this, of these amendments for the Transportation System Plan 2016-04.
Could I ask if you would like to recommend adding the chart to Chapter 1612?
Add the chart to Chapter 16.
And would you like to recommend simplifying Section 1612-200 to get rid of the thing about the cul-de-sac that we thought was confusing?
Yes, and the removal of the issue about the cul-de-sac as was stated to us.
And maybe recommend to have more of that discussion about the bicycle parking? Make sure that's the council knows.
Oh, at the council meeting?
At the council meeting, that they would keep that in mind, that the bicycle parking, transfer between bicycle parking and car parking might also be addressed by the council.
Here, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Rise up. The City Council will hold a public hearing on this matter on Monday, April 11, 2016, at 6:00 p.m. in the chamber. All right, moving on to old business?
We have none.
New business?
None.
Reports and comments, community development?
I have a number of them. I'm sure most of you are aware that last night, the City Council reappointed Commissioners Cunningham and Griffith to the Planning Commission.
Congratulations.
Also, the City Manager is holding a number of meetings about the vacation rental dwelling update to talk with the people. First one is tomorrow at 6:00 p.m. in the council chambers here. Then there's one on the 22nd at 6:00 p.m. at the Community Center, on the 23rd at 6:00 p.m. here in the council chambers, on the 29th at 6:00 p.m. at the Community College, Room 108, on the 30th at 6:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. Also, on March 31st, here in the council chambers, the PAC...
We are, we are...
Parks Master Plan.
Parks Master Plan. Our Project Advisory Committee is meeting in the evening from 5:30, 7:30. And during the day, we're holding interviews with various people to talk about needs and priorities for parks as we get this whole process started. Can I say a word about that before you go on with your list?
Sure.
Okay, all right. Not too long. I just want to say that we're not leaving the Planning Commission out of this for any particular reason, other than the Parks Board is the board that advises the council on parks and open spaces, and we hope that you'll all participate anyway. So there will be opportunities for public events. We plan to have the whole plan completed by the end of November.
As long as you're talking about parks, you want to talk about April 6, the 4 to 6:00 p.m.?
That's our first public event, April 6. At 4 to 6:00 p.m. And it will be at the Community Recreation Center. So we hope to catch people on their way to exercise or on their way home, or when they drop their kids off for practice, then hopefully we'll catch some of the kids. We're also going to be out in the community talking to people. So that's the first chance to talk about what you like, what you don't like, what we're missing in town, and what your priorities are.
On April 4th at 6:00 p.m., the Nell Scott Gap Advisory Committee will be meeting, talk about the Nell Scott Gap Plan. Also, on April 4th, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., there'll be a meeting, it should be a big meeting, on a work session on sewer-ing the lake. It'll be the City Council, the tribe, who else?
Devil's Lake Water Improvement District, county commissioners.
Yeah, so, big meeting. Everyone's invited to all of these things. And I think that's all I have on announcements right now.
All right, thank you.
Where's that last meeting being held?
I believe it's here. Yes, here, in the council chambers.
City Attorney. Planning Commissioners, have any thoughts or ideas or comments? Go ahead. I have one. Sadly, this will be my last meeting. I took a job in Portland, so I'll be moving soon, hopefully, maybe.
Congratulations on the job.
I'm going to miss you guys. It's been an experience and a lot of learning, so. Thank you. Anyway. I hope so. Well, it's going to be good. All of our kids and grandkids pretty much live in Portland now. Since SARS has raised and moved out, it's also be like, you know, a good time to move back closer to family. Unfortunately, it makes it closer to grandkids, so it's harder to push them out faster.
A two-hour drive is the perfect distance.
It is. Big for a long commute, though. All righty. Is there any public comments on non-agenda items not involving a public hearing? Seeing none. Future agenda items, next meeting? The next meeting will be on Monday, April 4, 2016. It'll be 3 o'clock to 5:00 p.m. It'll be a joint work session in the City Council to discuss the Devil's Lake Sewer System. And on Tuesday, April 5, 2016, will be a Commissioners Director Meeting, 6:00 p.m. here.
What's going to be on the agenda, then, is the multifamily zoning ordinance amendments from the last meeting, as Deb explained earlier today, some changes that we'll be proposing on that. Also, there will be a request for change of non-conforming use for the old Elks Club building.
That's it for our journey.